October 27th meeting of the Hoover City Council. I would like to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Council President Leita.
Here.
Council Pro Tim Posey.
Here.
Councilmember Sweeney.
Here.
Councilmember Driver.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Councilmember Middlebrooks.
Here.
Councilmember McClinton.
Here.
With the quorum present and all souls accounted for at the dais, we will proceed with our meeting and if everyone will please stand for the invocation to be led by our clerk and remain standing for the pledge to be led by Counselor Driver.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the night. We thank you for everyone that came for the night to give thanks to the service that was provided for the last five years of this term. We also thank you for everything that you do for our city and for blessing and in your name we're sung, Jesus Christ. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end or justice.
Mayor, I believe you have some proclamations tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. I would ask the folks that are representing Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Deborah Higgins from Safe House of Shelby County, Forensic Service Director, if she would come up. How are you doing? Good to see you. And we'll just step right in the middle there if you would. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and we have a proclamation for the folks who stand in front of us. So, Mr. City Attorney, would you clarify the proclamation?
Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive public health and safety issue that affects individuals in every community regardless of their age, gender, race, religion, sexual orientation, or socio-economic status. And whereas one in four women and one in seven men have experienced severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime according to national statistics. Whereas domestic violence can have lasting emotional, psychological, and physical effects on survivors and their families, and it often goes unreported due to fear, stigma, and systemic barriers. Whereas children who witness domestic violence are at a greater risk of experiencing emotional trauma, developmental challenges, and continuing the cycle of violence in their own lives. And whereas communities must come together to support survivors, hold offenders accountable, and work collaboratively to prevent domestic violence through education, outreach, and advocacy. Whereas during the month of October, individuals and organizations across the nation will join together to raise awareness, promote prevention, and support efforts to end domestic violence. And whereas the courage and resilience of survivors, advocates, service providers, and all those working to end abuse must be recognized and honored. Now therefore, we Frank V. Bercato Mayor and John V. Leita City Council President and on behalf of the residents of the City of Hoover do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Hoover and urge all residents to take a stand against domestic violence by supporting survivors, speaking out against abuse, and fostering a community where all individuals can live free from fear and violence.
Yes, my name is Deborah Higgins. I am with Safe House of Shelby County. I am the forensic medical service director and one of the state nurses that provide medical services to survivors of sexual assault, domestic violence, and strangulation. So yes, it's very important and I, again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Alabama. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, our law enforcement partners, our community partners, and especially the advocates and survivors that remind us every day why our work matters. Domestic violence is not a distant problem. One in four women and one in seven men experience sexual violence, physical violence, and stalking by an intimate partner. It is very often that is not reported because victims may not seek help, or they fear retaliation, or believe that no action will be taken. But it lives in our neighborhoods, in our schools, and sometimes in our own families. Across Alabama, thousands of men and women and children experience physical, emotional, and financial abuse each year. In Shelby and Jefferson Counties alone, law enforcement and first responders respond to hundreds of domestic violence calls each year. Behind every call is a person, someone's mother, daughter, son, neighbor, who are reaching for safety and hope. When we issue a proclamation like this, we are doing more than signing a document. We are declaring as a community that domestic violence will not be hidden behind silence. We are naming the problem, and in naming it, we begin to dismantle its power. So why does a proclamation matter? So first of all, awareness saves lives. By bringing this issue into the public eye, we make it easier for survivors to speak out and harder for abusers to hide behind closed doors. Second, proclamation signals commitment from leadership. When elected officials and community leaders take a stand, it tells victims, "You are not alone." But it also sends a message to offenders, "This community stands for justice." It also mobilizes action. They bring together law enforcement, courts, service agencies, and citizens to help coordinate, prevent, and educate, and support. They open doors for grants and resources, like state funding that supports shelters and sane centers, much like Safe House of Shelby County all across Alabama. And finally, proclamations honor the courage of survivors. They remind us that healing and hope are possible, and that every survivor's voice helps guide us towards a safer Alabama. So as we raise awareness this month, let's remember that proclamations are only the beginning. Let's turn our awareness into action, such as learning the warning signs of abuse, support local shelters and sane centers, speak up when someone needs help, but most importantly, teach our children what healthy relationships look like. Together, we can make Alabama a place where every person is safe, valued, and free from violence in their homes. Thank you for your commitment, your compassion, and your courage to stand against domestic violence, and not just words, but also in action. Our Safe House Crisis Line, it's 205-669-7233. It's 24/7 for those who need us. Until every house is a safe house, I thank you.
Thank you. And we would like for the representatives for the National American Indian Heritage Month, Ms. Jan Seale Hicks is here, and Pamela Parker. Jan is the chapter region, Lily of the Kahaba DAR, and Pam is Chair of American Indian Committee and also Lily of the Kahaba DHR, DAR.
Whereas the history and culture of our nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous people. Whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designated the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, we Frank V. Bercato Mayor and John V. Leita City Council President and on behalf of the residents of the City of Hoover do hereby proclaim November 2025 as National American Indian Heritage Month in Hoover and encourage all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
I'm used to talking to that microphone, but what a great night it is to celebrate, and we thank you all so much who made the choice and were able to join us for the reception just prior to our meeting. But I come to this podium tonight to recognize our outgoing mayor Frank Bercato. Mayor Bercato, I'm going to ask you, as you've asked so many people to come stand down here in front of the emblem if you would, as I talk about you and your service. In 1973, most of y'all know that Mayor Bercato began his service to the city with Hoover Fire Department. He was our first ever paramedic and then gave 42 years of service to our fire department. Some of our HR records may be a little fuzzy, but I think I am going back that far, but I think I'm confident in saying with 52 years of service, Mayor Bercato is our longest-serving ever city employee. So for that, I know we owe him a round of applause. When the history of our city is written, there's no doubt that Mayor Bercato's fingerprint will be largely on what he did over the last nine years in terms of our economic development. In fact, in the last term, Mayor Bercato, under his leadership and guidance, the city set forth a path that for generations, unless a future council decides to change it, will guarantee the financial stability of our city. In fact, when Mayor Bercato took office, we had $32 million in the bank, quite a healthy bank account for any city by any standard in the state of Alabama. It most recently reached $80 million. So to be able to do that in nine short years is nothing short of remarkable, and Mayor, we who get to live in the city for generations to come owe you a tremendous gratitude for that. In 2016, the city made a decision to build a Hoover Met Complex. And other than the River Chaise Galleria, I'm convinced that that complex will be the greatest economic driver in this city's history. Mayor Bercato inherited that project, having passed just before he took office, but it was he and his administration and his staff who implemented it and made it the reality that it is today, drawing folks from all over the country in here to play sports and fill our hotels and fill our restaurants, transforming the economy from a largely retail base to producing about $80 million a year in sports tourism. And for that, we can all be tremendously thankful for many years to come. But what really awaits Mayor Bercato after he leaves office next week is really the most important job in his life, and it's one, I think he would agree, that's far more important than the nine years he's served as mayor. And that's being a husband to Francis, a father, a full-time father to his three children, and most importantly, chief, if y'all don't know, he is known as chief to his grandchildren, and being a full-time chief to those nine grandbabies. But would you join me in thanking Mayor Bercato for his nine years? One, it's a plaque and I'll read the inscription. It says, "In appreciation of your dedication, service, and countless contributions to the City of Hoover and its citizens, Mayor Frank B. Bercato, 2016 to 2025." And also, probably the most special deal, the mayor has the privilege of presenting keys to the city, to those folks who have really made an impact on our city. And I know Mayor Bercato has been very choosy as to who he offers a key to. In fact, to receive one from Mayor Bercato is something incredibly special. So Mayor, this is not from you to you, this is from the City of Hoover to you. It says, "Key to the City of Hoover, Alabama, presented to Mayor Frank B. Bercato."
Stand up more, stand up straighter. I am not nearly the public speaker that John Leita is. So forgive me as sometimes I get, I still get nervous speaking in front of public. Get sweaty palms, shaky voice. But it's not my nervousness night on my behalf, but it's really the appreciation of honoring the three outgoing council members that we have up here. So at this time, I'm going to go by place number to honor each one of you and ask that Place One, Kurt Posey, come stand in front of the emblem. As Kurt's walking up here. Kurt and I have known each other since our college days and Greek fraternity life together at UAB. When I first ran in 2016 along with Kurt and some others, you know, seeing someone that I already had a relationship with, I haven't seen him since college, but I naturally gravitated to Kurt. We formed a quick friendship, one that was rooted in commonality to begin with, but developed into true friendship and trust. And I certainly appreciate your friendship through the years, Kurt, and your service to the city. I want to thank Councilman Murphy for reminding me, when Mike Shaw left this city, he did us the honor of writing state bills in each of our honors. So the four returning council members, Steve McClinton, Derek Murphy, and Christie Driver, came together to write these proclamations on each of y'all's behalfs. Hail the service and shiny dome, Council President Pro Tim Kurt Posey. Whereas Council President Pro Tim Kurt Posey is recognized for this distinguished service and fiscal foresight, and has been a vital source of administrative stability and procedural integrity, diligently overseeing crucial foundational committees, including finance and investments, ensuring the smooth, efficient, and fiscally responsible operation of our city government. And whereas his commitment extended to enhancing our quality of life through his tireless work as an unparalleled avid champion for the arts, playing a starring role in the formation of the Hoover Arts Council and enriching the cultural vitality of the community. And whereas his reputation as a stickler for research and crunchy numbers ensured that no expenditure escaped inspection, making every policy recommendation rock solid as a balanced budget, and earning him the distinction of being able to calculate the exact number of pencils used in City Hall since 2016. And whereas Councilman Posey is also recognized for his follicular sacrifice and public service as he began his inaugural term with a magnificent jet-black head of hair. But over the course of his service, a significant number of these strands bravely sacrificed themselves due to the sheer existential weight of public service. And after two dedicated terms and nine glorious years of service, will conclude his tenure with his final council meeting on Monday, October 27th, 2025. And whereas the resulting beautifully shiny reflective dome has become a literal and metaphorical beacon of transparency, reflecting light upon all matters brought before this council, now therefore be it ordained by the Hoover City Council, State of Alabama. Section 1, the Kurt Posey Data Dive Day. The last Tuesday of every October, so henceforth be known as Kurt Posey Data Dive Day. Wherein all city council members, department heads, and citizens are encouraged to spend a minimum of two full hours diligently studying a spreadsheet, questioning its assumptions, and finding at least one formatting error. In the spirit of the councilman's rigorous analytical approach, ceremoniously adopted this 27th day of October 2025 with the sincere gratitude and best wishes of the Hoover community.
So we also have a plaque and a proclamation of Councilman Posey, a key to the city. And in honor of his term as Council Pro Tim.
So I didn't know Sam at all from Hill of Beans, as they say, when we first ran in 2016. But I quickly learned what kind of man Sam Sweeney is. A man of great character, a principled man, a family man, and serves with great humility. Sam, our friendship will remain long after this is over. So I appreciate the character and integrity that you have served with. And for that, I'll read the proclamation. Distinguished service and dedication, Councilmember Sam Sweeney, October 2025. Whereas Councilman Sam Sweeney, having served a full and commenable term as a council representative for Place 2, has been a steadfast voice of reason, a trait reflecting the principled man and leader this council has come to know and respect. And whereas his commitment to protecting the character and foundation of our city has been noticed and deeply appreciated by this body and the citizens of Hoover. And whereas the council profoundly respects his decision to step away to prioritize time with his boys who are active recreational ballplayers, recognizing that this commitment to family combined with his honorable service sets a high standard for civic duty. And whereas Councilman Sweeney's final meeting on Monday, October 27th, 2025 marks not an end, but merely a transition of his esteemed public service from City Hall to the nearest playing field or court. And whereas the physical, mental, and emotional demands of full-time dad's taxi service and dugout supervision are comparable in challenge, though substantially higher in the volume of required snacks, to the duties of a city councilman. Now therefore be it ordained by the Hoover City Council, State of Alabama. Section 1, Councilable Sam Sweeney is hereby granted the title of Councilman Emeritus for Recurational Affairs, and is officially relieved of all future council meeting obligations in favor of mandatory attendance at all youth sporting events. The City of Hoover extends its deepest thank you, Sam, for your leadership and for the integrity you brought to the council, and wishes him every success in his new role as Chief Administrator of Sports Schedules. Ceremoniously adopted this 27th day of October 2025 with the sincere gratitude and best wishes of the Hoover community.
Mike Kurt, we have a plaque and a key to the city.
You've served right alongside him. So John started serving way before the rest of us in 2012. And I may have met him a few times along those years before I started serving, but I honestly don't believe he remembered our interactions. He may have. But John is one of the first people that I called in 2015 or 2016 when I thought about running for council. And he was so gracious enough to come out and spend his time to sit down with me, share his wisdom, his thoughts about public service and what it means, and just gave me great advice. And I have always appreciated that. I've learned so much from you, John, throughout our years, and I appreciate your service to the city. Commemorating the finish line of public service, Council President John Leita, October 2025. Whereas Council President John Leita has faithfully served the citizens of Hoover for three terms since November 5th, 2012. And whereas his tenure has been defined by clear strategic leadership and an unwavering commitment to the financial health of our city, ensuring the responsible management of Hoover's assets and resources. And whereas he has left an indelible mark on our community's prosperity through his dedication to long-term vision and strategic growth. And whereas his passion for civic leadership transcended local boundaries, as evidenced by his commitment to international exchange through the American Council of Young Political Leaders, where he and his family with exemplary southern hospitality personally welcomed and hosted legislative leaders from around the world, including the Legislative Assembly of Northern Ireland. And whereas beyond his civic duties, he has become a symbol of extraordinary endurance and tenacity as an avid marathon runner and extreme outdoorsman, famously undertaking a jet ski voyage from Florida to the Bahamas. And whereas the council president will preside over his final city council meeting on Monday, October 27th, 2025, marking the conclusion of an era characterized by both fiscal prudence and unstoppable will. Now therefore be it ordained by the Hoover City Council, State of Alabama. Section 1, the three-term victory lap. The city council declares that Councilman Leita has completed the race in his commitment to Hoover. Section 2, mandated rests and future adventures. The city extends its deepest gratitude for his public service and acknowledges that he finally gets a break, wishing him godspeed in all his future endeavors, with the hope that his next great physical feats, whether running or high-speed personal watercraft, will be filled with smooth seas and clear roads. Ceremoniously adopted this 27th day of October 2025 with the sincere gratitude and best wishes of the Hoover community.
All right. On to the business of the city. We will now begin with our agenda, and that would begin with the payment of bills. Entertain a motion for the payment.
Mr. President, move to pay the bills.
Second. Motion and second for approval. Any questions from the body? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number two, approval of minutes, and you'll see several dates listed there. These came at a time when the clerk's office was in full speed on elections and runoff elections. So that's why there's quite the lengthy list there. We entertain a motion for approval. The minutes is listed on the agenda.
Mr. President, move to approve the minutes without reading.
Second. Have a motion and second for approval. Questions from the body? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number three, resolution number 8626-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes changing the location of the organizational meeting of the City Council of the City of Hoover, Alabama, to be held at Hoover High School Performing Arts Center on November 3, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8626-25.
Second. Have a motion and second for approval. Questions from the council? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number four, resolution number 8627-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute the purchase and purchase the renewal of a stop-loss insurance policy for the City of Hoover, Alabama, with the Travelers Indemnity Company, Travelers Property Casualty Company of America, to provide for the following insurance coverages: automobile liability, general liability, law enforcement liability, public entity management liability, employment practices liability, and excess umbrella coverage.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8627-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Ms. Carrier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So it is time to renew the city's casualty insurance policy with Travelers. We, this would be our fifth year of coverage with Travelers, and it does include a 7% increase this year overall. However, it is within budget, and we are recommending that the city approve the resolution to extend this policy for another year. I have Mr. James Riddle with USI Insurance Services here. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Carrier or Mr. Riddle? Any questions from the public tonight on the resolution? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you both. Item five, Ms. Borden is here to talk to us about resolution number 8628-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to accept and execute change order number three for bid number 25-006 for the Hoover Public Library Theater renovation project for an increase of $22,249.37 for a new contract sum of $303,090.32.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution 8628-25.
Have a motion and a quick second.
Very quick.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the funding for this project. If you came to our show on either Thursday or Friday night, it looks fabulous in the theater. We are seeking a change order because the specs called for lighting on every other step, and for the safety of our audience, we really need lighting on every step, and it will be still within budget even though it is $22,000 more. So no budget amendment.
Very good. That's good news. Any questions from the body for Ms. Borden? Any questions from the public on the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item six, resolution number 8629-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute an agreement with DataWorks Plus for annual support of the Hoover City Jail's fingerprinting software in the amount of $6,766.80.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8629-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval. Chief McDuffie and Mr. Coper here. Should the members have any question about this renewal? Any questions from the body for those two gentlemen? Any questions from the audience? Very good. Motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. It's the easiest money you both made all day, isn't it? Item number seven, resolution number 8630-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Civic Plus LLC for the provision of accessibility tools to support compliance with web content accessibility guidelines in accordance with Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8630-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval, Mr. Shaw.
This is just in regards to DOJ mandate that we be meeting those that be compliant by April 24, 2026. Our CMS provider, Civic Plus, provided us ADA remediation software that'll be able to keep us in compliance with our website content, as well as a tool widget for those with visual impairment or low vision. It's been planned, it's been budgeted. We just need to move forward with an agreement and a signature.
Any questions on this resolution? Anyone from the public here to speak on the resolution before us? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item eight, resolution number 8631-25, Mr. Corley.
This authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute the use of funds report and confirms compliance with the requirements of a grant agreement between the City of Hoover, Alabama, and Jefferson County Commission.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8631-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Mr. Pepper, welcome.
Thank you. I got to figure out the secrets of Chief McDuffie and Moose. I don't know how you just stand back there, but that was good. The city receives a grant from Jefferson County to help fund certain operations at the senior center. We utilize this $20,000 funds to offset the salary for one of our recreation specialists at the senior center who oversees our nutrition program and the meals on wheels. And this form, use of funds form, is for Jefferson County as they close out their fiscal year 2025, and it's just showing that we spent the funds in an appropriate manner.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Pepper, from the members? Any member of the audience like to speak on the item? There's a motion on the floor and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number nine, resolution number 8632-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to accept a bid for bid number 25-021 River Chase Pumping Station Number Six Improvements Phase One from Rev Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $334,410, and authorizes execution of an agreement related thereto.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8632-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Mr. Welton.
Yes, this resolution is still with Rev Construction as the lowest responsible and responsible bidder for the River Chase Number Six Improvement Project. This fund, this was a part of the $6.1 million that were funded by the council back in May. This would include us relocating an existing manhole that's on the Harbor River right now, putting in about approximately 40-foot linear pipe, cleaning out, storm easement, and replacing the existing cart path there on the golf course there.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Welch from the body?
Just one thing. I mean, I see on the bids, I mean, thank God we get bids, the lowest one compared to number two is like, the two, about $240,000, $240,000, and the third one is basically from the second, oh, close to half a million dollars. Is, we feel comfortable that they met all Rev? And I'm familiar with Rev, they do good work, but they've met all the needs of the spec?
Yes, sir. I think what happened once, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting.
Okay.
It's that location of the existing storm, I mean, sanitary line there.
Okay.
I think that's what, why they threw that big number out there is like they really didn't want to touch it. That's my opinion.
Unforeseen. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions from the body? Any member of the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, a motion and a second that's on the floor for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item 10, resolution number 8633-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday beginning at 12:01 AM on Friday, February 20, 2026, and ending at 12:00 midnight on Sunday, February 22, 2026, within the City of Hoover.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8633-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Mr. Yeager, you've spoken about this one many times in the past, but talk to us about it.
Believe it or not, this is year 13 for these weather holidays. So with your approval, we'll notify the Alabama Department of Revenue of same, and then we will post this on our website so our public knows what they can buy during this sales tax holiday.
Very good. Any questions from the body on this item? And any from the public? Very good. Have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Item 12, resolution number 8635-25, Mr. Corley.
We skipped 11.
Did we? Let's go back to 11. Resolution 8634-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025 for replacement of a boiler at the Hoover Recreation Center shown on Exhibit X.
Mr. President, move for the approval of resolution number 8634-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Mr. Yeager and Ms. Wyatt.
Yes, sir. We need to do a budget amendment in the amount of $96,319 to make this repair replacement of the boiler at the rec center. Ms. Wyatt can speak to the project itself, but these funds will come from unallocated fund balance in our capital projects fund. So we're in good shape there.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Wyatt or Mr. Yeager? Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Seeing none, a motion and a second is on the floor for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Now we'll move to item number 12, which is replacement of said boiler, resolution number 8635-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute an agreement with Johnson Controls, Inc., for the replacement of a boiler at the Hoover Recreation Center in the amount of $96,319.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8635-25.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Ms. Wyatt.
Yes, thank you for allowing us to bring this to you for consideration tonight. This is to replace the boiler at the Hoover Recreation Center. It did go down as of Friday, so we did have to close showers because there is no hot water. So we would like to get this replaced as soon as we can. It was a fiscal year '26 budget request, and Mr. Yates indicated it was one of his highest priorities before he left. We had already planned on bringing this to you because we knew it was limping along, but it did indeed fail before we could fully get it to you for consideration. So we are asking for that consideration tonight. It will take approximately two weeks to get materials, and then it will take another five days to replace, at which time we'll be able to get the showers up and running after a full replacement. So happy to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions for Ms. Wyatt on the replacement?
Just one. Ms. Wyatt, when can the public expect hot showers again?
I would say it's going to be about three to four weeks.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or any from the public? Very good. Motion and second is on the floor for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Item 13, resolution number 8636-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a special agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation pertaining to the installation of drainage structures, including a Type IV junction box within the US Highway 31 right-of-way.
Mr. President, move for the approval of resolution number 8636-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Ms. Gill.
Yes. The item before you denied is just authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with the DOT for the DOT, the tie-in to the DOT right-of-way with the drainage repair that was approved in April. There's no scope change, no cost change, just authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Very good. Any questions from the members tonight? Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Seeing none, a motion and a second for approval is on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We'll now move on to our public hearings, beginning with item 14. I am told by Mr. Martin that items 14, 15, 16, and 18 have been resolved to the satisfaction of he and his staff.
That is correct. Those locations have been cut and are no longer in violation.
Mr. President, I'd move to withdraw resolution number 8637-25, 8638-25, 8639-25, and 8599-25.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the withdrawal of items 14, 16, 15, 16, and 18. Any questions from the body on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Items, item 17, resolution number 8597-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes abatement of a weed or other vegetation nuisance at 2137 Lynn Gate Drive, Hoover, Alabama.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8597-25.
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval. Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir. As of today, this afternoon, this location is still in violation for weeds and grass over 12 inches tall, and we request approval of the abatement.
Very good. We'll open the public hearing, ask members of the body if they have questions or comments about the address at 2137 Lynn Gate. Anyone from the public here to speak regarding this address? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item 19, resolution number 8600-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes abatement of a weed or other vegetation nuisance at 3558 Advon Drive, Hoover, Alabama.
Mr. President, move for approval of resolution number 8600-25.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir. Our code enforcement official also paid a visit to this site this afternoon and finds that it is also still in violation of city code with weeds and grass in excess of 12 inches in height, and we request approval of the abatement.
Any questions from the body for the public hearing? Any member of the public here to speak regarding this address? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing with a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and that motion carries. We'll now move to items 20 through 26, and we are going to consider these as one item with one motion and one vote. Mr. Corley, if you'll read the resolutions.
Resolution 861825 authorizes a weed lien in the amount of $1,350 for the property located at 37, I mean, I'm sorry, 2337 Tyler Road, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 861925 authorizes a weed lien in the amount of $1,900 for the property located at 1301 Daria Street, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 862025 authorizes a weed lien in the amount of $2,250 for the property located at 2125 Tyler Lane, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 862125 authorizes a weed lien in the amount of $650 for the property located at 2152 Larchmont Circle, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 862225 authorizes a weed lien in the amount of $1,650 for the property located at 2882 Wisteria Drive, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 862325 authorizes a weed lien in the amount of $2,250 for the property at 425 Shades Avenue, Hoover, Alabama. And resolution 862425 authorizes a weed lien in the amount of $1,675 for the property located at 2874 Wisteria Drive, Hoover, Alabama.
Mr. President, I'd move for approval of resolution numbers 8618-25, 8619-25, 8620-25, 8621-25, 8622-25, 8623-25, and 8624-25.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Martin, if you'll explain, this isn't unprecedented, but certainly not often we place liens, so explain the process to us, please.
Yes. So after we go through the nuisance declaration and the abatement process, the city incurs costs for going out and abating the nuisance, going and cutting the grass at these various locations. And each of these seven items represent a location that we went out and cut at city taxpayers' expense during this growing season. The purpose of placing lien on the property, which will be done by our legal team with the Office of Probate, is to ensure that tax lien is placed on the property for said amount, so that when there is a transaction that occurs on the property or taxes are paid, that the taxpayers will be compensated for our going out and abating the nuisance.
Very good. We will open the public hearing for any member who would like to speak or ask a question about any of the following addresses that were read during the resolutions.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Two of the properties reside within the Montedoro neighborhood, and members of that community informed me that these are repeat offenders and possibly unoccupied residencies. They wanted to know, is there any steps above and beyond nuisance abatement and then placing liens on these properties to ensure that they don't keep repeating the same offense?
Not unless there is a clear and present Not unless there is a clear and present danger posed to public health by the property or any of the structures thereon. State law does lay out clearly what our process is for dealing with high grass and weeds. And of course, if there is an issue related to the buildings, if they're insecure, or they do pose a public health risk, then anybody with that information is more than welcome to reach out to us, our Code Enforcement Division, and we'll follow up accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Any other questions from the body for Mr. Martin? Any member of the public here to speak at the public hearing regarding any of the addresses we are considering? Very good. We will close the public hearing. We have a motion and second for approval of the resolutions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Now open the floor to any council comments. Any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
If you can come to the microphone and just give us your name and area of town, we would appreciate that.
Hello, my name is Barbara Aldred. I live in the Inverness area, and I would like to see what is being done for the BJ's location that is, you know, I know we've had some discussion about that before here at this meeting, but we didn't get very far. It was taken outside, where really no one in the city council was here to entertain the people who live in that area. I don't want it. I mean, Valleydale Road right now is so congested, and to bring in a big box store like that, and nothing has been done to add any additional lights or expand the road, maybe you know more than that has been done, but we do not in this neighborhood. And when I talk to neighbors, we're just not for it. And I'm one for business. I love business, but when it starts encroaching upon neighborhoods where we have kids riding bikes and walking, and we walk and walk our dogs, and this big store's coming just right across the street, it needs to be stopped, and whatever you can do to help, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Thomas?
Hoover has code regulating stormwater. Permitting, design, inspections, maintenance are all in code. Article five drainage and Article nine stormwater detention have been in code as subdivision regulations since 1989. This section describes in detail structural controls or detention ponds. A covenant is required between the owner of the pond and the city, making sure that they inspect and maintain the ponds. Of course, regulations can always be better, but regulations or code are not the problem. Enforcement and diligence are the problem that residents face, not code. The 2018 NPDES permit required Hoover to inventory and report on private and public structural controls. This was not new. In 2010, EPA sent two reports to Hoover asking them to inventory, actually requiring them to inventory structural controls. The city has not done this. The drainage plans for new developments must use a certified registered Alabama engineer. In 2013, Magnolia Grove Detention Pond was certified by an engineer with the caveat that the downstream infrastructure was likely inadequate to handle the new water from the new development. The city could have denied the plan or could have required the developer to upgrade the downstream infrastructure. The city did not. In 2014, flooding of the properties downhill of Magnolia Grove began. In 2022, Shoal Engineering presented a report, in its report to the city on Sulfur Springs and Twin Pines Circle, and the report said that Magnolia Grove Detention Pond was not maintained, was flooding properties downstream, and further, the infrastructure on Twin Pines Circle was indeed inadequate to handle the water from above. In 2014, the city developed a process for residents to request drainage on private property. In October of 2021, 390 properties were damaged. Fifty of those filed claims against the city. Apparently, none of those were approved, not one. The city knew of potential problems before ground was broken at Magnolia Grove and did nothing. Did not monitor inspections or maintenance at Magnolia Grove for the detention pond. The HOA was not aware of its responsibility, and the city should have been in contact with the HOA according to rules. Then the city denied the claim. This needs to change. There are many examples of this, and I have provided some of those for you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Matt went through Scout Creek Drive. Following the rules and enforcing ordinances is important. Hoover has been notified multiple times that it must maintain records of inspections and maintenance of structural controls such as retention and detention ponds. The NPDES permit requires the city to provide an inventory and the MS4 annual report since at least 2009. Sadly, this information is not in the report. Now the city has failed to meet the requirements of the Alabama Open Records Act by not providing this information. Once again, the city is not playing by the rules, specifically the law in this case. I made a records request for structural controls, which was acknowledged by the city on July 30th, 2025. I followed up with multiple requests for updates on the records request. On October 13th, I was notified that the request had been classified as time-intensive. This notice should have been provided within 15 days, according to Alabama law. It appears the city does not have the required inventory, does not have a record of inspections or maintenance of private structural controls as required. Enforcement and diligence are the problem. It's costing the citizens of Hoover in tax dollars, property value, and property damage. The city, the city commission's plans and studies then ignores the result. Future Hoover and Shoal drainage studies are prominent examples. Hope we soon have city leaders that will enable the staff and require the rules and ordinances to be followed.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Sharon Bestwick. I live at Inverness Highlands neighborhood, and that's right off Valleydale. It's between Ashley Maxx and Genza, right across from where the proposed BJ's is going. I'm just here to voice that we do not want that to go in. We do need your help because we understand when Dixie's going out of business there at Inverness Corner, so we'll need a new occupant, you know, grocery to go in there. Fresh Market has already gone out of business. That's setting empty. The Mexican restaurant across the street from Fresh Market is setting empty. I went over today and drove around Inverness Heights Market, and it's, there's a whole section of like seven awnings that is empty. So we definitely need your help in getting business there, but we don't want more just empty storefronts. We want to get some, some people in some of the existing buildings, and we need your help doing that.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak tonight?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say it's been an honor and a privilege to represent and serve the City of Hoover for the last nine years. Our team has put its heart and soul into getting the best possible results for the city during nine years of tremendous growth and also some challenging situations, and I would like to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity, and I wish everyone all the best in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. I would add to that, that there's a tremendous challenge for this next administration to fill the shoes of our legal team. In fact, the bench strength that exists at the Wallace Jarden firm is unmatched in the service to the city, from not only day-to-day operations of legal work here in this building, but also in the courts, and we appreciate that very, very much. Thank you, and please pass that on to your team as well, Mr. Corley. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I would like to speak.
Happy to have you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilmembers, first of all, thank you for your service. Frank, your service is exemplary, and you should be very proud. I would like to talk about BJ's at Inverness. This has been going on since 2018. I've been to probably half a dozen meetings where I have objected about it, I've raised concerns about it. Building a big box store within a stone's throw of a retirement home is indefensible. Danbury at Inverness is considered one of the best retirement homes in the area. In that facility, you have people in wheelchairs. You have people who retired. You have people with various degrees of mental illness, and a lot of them are waiting to say their last years of life, and hopefully in a peaceful environment. And along comes Hoover City Council and says, we're going to build a big box store right on your doorstep. Not only that, it's probably going to take two years of construction, so we're going to be hammering, cutting trees down, pouring concrete, probably five days a week, maybe six days a week, from 7:30 till 6:00. Don't be worried, it shouldn't bother you. Not only that, we're going to create 500 jobs right next door to you. We're going to increase the traffic by approximately 1,000 vehicles a day. Think about it. Everyone in the city council, you look fairly young. I'm eight years old. My wife has dementia. I've lived in that area since you guys have been on the city council. Now, at some point in your life, you're going to be old, or you're going to have parents who are old, and you're going to want them to be taken care of. And I hope, when you get to that point, that you don't have mental illness, because it is devastating. If you want to live your life out in peaceful, peaceful retirement home, reflect back when you were on the council and said, I was on Hoover City Council, and I approved a big box store right next to a retirement home. Is that something you'd be proud of? If I look at your brochure, you say that Hoover is the good place to live. We believe in quality of life. As a council, your first priority should be to your residents. By just, by, by putting economic development first, I think you're not honoring your commitment to the residents.
Thank you very much. May we get your name for the record, please?
Say what?
May I get your name for the record, please?
My name is David Robson. I've got one more point to make.
We're out of time. We thank you for, very much for your coming, but thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Very good. Thank you all for attending. We're adjourned.[1794.71][1794.71]